Thank you, Madam Vice President. Just wanted to first start out by just saying thank you for doing some of the work here and really appreciate that at least, you know, that the City Coordinator’s Office is taking the lead on this now, and hopefully that’s clear now to the enterprise. I wanted to echo Councilmember Gordon’s point, though, that I’m kind of lost on all this stuff. You know, we’re talking on a racial equity toolkit, we’re talking about an action plan, we’re talking about all these different things, and I thought I had a handle on this, but I mean, it just seems very unclear, murky, and then looking at the presentation and just seeing how every department is going every which way, I mean, I’m wondering, I mean, are we getting to a point where we have something that everybody can follow? Or I’m not getting that part very clear here?
Council Chair, Councilmember Yang, you know, I’m glad to hear that. I mean, I, how policymakers choose to engage departments in equity work is completely up to council members. There has been a lot of different bodies and people and departments working on this work. Our goal moving forward, and we will present that to you as this progresses, is really to simplify a bit. There have been a lot of terms, Civil Rights has been working on it, there was Equitable Solutions, there is the Racial Equity Action Plan, there is the Promise Zone, there’s a lot out there. Our job, I believe, in the Coordinator’s Office, is to figure out how they all synthesize, really figure out how they’re better aligned. One of the big aha moments was that precisely everybody seems to be doing a lot of work, but it’s all over the place, and how do we figure out and get the benefit, maximize the benefits of bringing it together in one coordinated way? And that’s precisely why we hired someone who can be at the helm of that organization, to be the convener, to be the coordinator of some of these efforts. So what we’re hoping you’ll see in our draft as we present forward in the future is precisely a much simpler, easier version to understand of what really is a complex, complicated, important issue.
Right, and my thing is this, that, I mean, if our goal is One Minneapolis by closing gaps, racial gaps, I just hope we don’t overcomplicate stuff, that it just gets way too, too much that it doesn’t keep our eye on the prize, which is, you know, the One Minneapolis, closing the gap season. So, I mean, I would just say that as, you know, some sort of cautionary message, that it just seems like it’s way too complicated for just the average person, and, you know, and I’d imagine my colleagues here are, you know, a little bit more than average, and I think it’s confusing as heck.
All right, I’m not sure that I’m seeing any other questions or comments here, so I will just say thank you very much, Ms. Rivera Vandermeide. And I think, quite honestly, I think some of the questions that were posed about kind of the breadth of what’s in here, which is more, I’m taking it just a little bit more of kind of where your staff is at in trying to do an assessment, is this is kind of the assessment, knowing that this, we had not had any report on this for some time, but your own stated direction of next steps, I think is hopefully, in my mind, kind of getting at some of these more key things. How are we kind of getting better hold of this work, making sure it’s connected to city work, not just a great project, and then how are we also making that move to connect the work to our results, Minneapolis, and other ways that we might actually then evaluate, is this being effective? And I kind of, you know, in a way, too, this reminds me of our budget discussions that we recently had with CPED, where we had some discussion about some really good programs, but we weren’t sure how these programs that came up in the CPED budget were related to other programs that do similar things in other departments. And so I think it’s a little bit endemic, maybe, to what we’re trying to do in the city as a whole, is trying to figure out what’s that good balance between allowing creativity and good programs to happen that are initiated by, acted to centralized decision-making at some point, so that we’re not overlapping our efforts. So I’m going to, because we think we have to do two actions here, and I might just ask my colleagues a little quieter, if we can please move to receive and file the reports, and then I’ll move separately the staff direction. So with that, I’ll move to receive and file. On approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. And then, related to this work, and also, I think, as an effort to give some more direction to work around one aspect that has come up in this report, which is the supplier diversity efforts. Councilmember Quincy and I have been, over the last two years, really, meeting periodically with staff, trying to understand how we can get some firmer direction on this body of initiatives, and I want to thank the Coordinator’s Office for stepping forward to help more firmly lead these efforts. I don’t know if Councilmember Quincy has any comments on this. It is a long direction, that I will say again, that the Coordinator’s Office helped us write, it has some options in it. I think the meat of it is, though, that they are going to put together with incorporating some of these ideas, a one-year and a five-year plan, so we’re a little bit more focused and direct on what might be our efforts around supplier diversity, and then it says that there’ll be a report back to Committee of the Whole on Ways and Means. I think probably Councilmember Quincy and I will just talk about what’s the best place for the update, I don’t know that we need it in both committees, and so we have been working very cooperatively on this. Any comments, Ms. Rivera Vandermeide, that you’d like to make on this, or from my colleagues?
Thanks for allowing us the opportunity. I don’t have it before me to look at the language, but I will say that we have worked in conjunction on it. Again, having been in the Coordinator’s Office a short time, one of the tasks that I’ve been given is to look at where we were on supplier diversity. I’ve pulled together an initial small group of people just to figure out, to catch up myself, and to figure that is, but I’m hoping as we move forward, and frankly, I hope that that’s my, that’s my usual approach for all, is that I don’t like to start from scratch, I want to just move forward from where we are, so that we’re not reinventing the wheel unless there is something that necessitates us moving backwards. So I’m hoping to take some of the direction that council has given the city and different departments in the past, moving that forward, and really trying to come up with specific directives on how we can kind of move the dial on this great, important work. Before you are topics that have come forward in the past, and they have been part of the previous directives, and trying to figure out and synthesize work with the various departments to be able to move that forward is really what our intent is.
Okay, Councilmember Quincy.
Thank you, Madam Chair, excuse me. I thank you, first of all, from the Coordinator’s Office for taking this on as a, as a primary challenge. I think what you mentioned earlier, Council Vice President, was exemplified in the budget process. We know our departments are working on these goals, we know that they’re all working together, and this particular initiative is something we’ve been talking about for several years, and it’s really how the city does its own business, how it does its procurement, that was the, one of the top boxes there in your matrix, as well as how to have more companies participating in the process. So I think this is putting it in the Coordinator’s Office, coming up with specific timelines, and how we’re reexamining how we do business with each other, and as well as welcoming in the economic development arm of CPED, how we can reach out and make small businesses more successful in the city. So I think it’s a perfect staff direction, of course, we wrote it, so of course, it’s perfect, but it is very long, it’s very detailed, and it’s really an outgrowth of a lot of work that we’ve already been doing, and talking to other departments. So I’m very appreciative of the specificity of the timelines and moving this project forward, although we’ve been talking about it for several years, we actually are seeing it in action. Now this just gives us the opportunity to demonstrate its success and be creative as we modify our existing programs. So thank you very much, Council Vice President, for your leadership on this issue, and the Finance Department and CPED, and including IT Department, will be really working hard on making this actualized.
Thank you, and I’ll just say, that’s not all, because we have the Civil Rights Department and then the Coordinator’s Office, so I think even just listing all of these kind of says why it’s been difficult to figure out how to harness both the good work, but figure out a more centralized direction. So I’m going to, I’m not seeing other questions, I’m going to move approval of the staff direction discussion. Seeing none, on approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and that item is approved, and thank you very much for the report. We are going to take one short item out of order. Councilmember Goodman has to leave in a few moments and has to give the report of the Community Development and Regulatory Services Committee, so Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Dahl, thank you very much for giving me an opportunity just to do this quickly before agenda setting. One of the things, members, you’ll note on the agenda is that there are, the first eight items are all land sales to the same person. This is a very unique situation that we have not had happen before, and we had a fairly thorough presentation in committee from Wilson Molina, who was, I thought, very impressive, had showed us photos of his previous work, is taking on eight properties in the fourth and fifth wards that are all in very tight proximity to each other, hoping that he can utilize kind of the ability to be close to do everything in a row. This is the first time we’ve done anything like this, I do think the staff have vetted it, and I thought the committee members were pretty impressed with his activities. So that would be items one through eight. Item nine is a bond issuance, ten are the regular licensed consumer services agenda. Item eleven is the project analysis authorization for the Wellington condominiums HIA financing. Item twelve is probably the largest item, one of the largest items we’ll take up in committee this year, this is the allocation of almost $14 million of Longcom Housing Tax Credits to three projects, the Youth Link Supportive Housing Projects, Marshall Flats, Clare Housing, and the PRG Portfolio One projects. This is a fairly significant allocation of resources for what looks like a minor item in committee. And item number thirteen is the environmental grant applications for fall 2015. There are maybe fifteen applications going in on a variety of projects around the city. Madam Chair, I’ll also note that the Clerk has informed me that the resolution from the Claims Committee with regard, with regard to the issue of the right of appeal, was heard in Ways and Means this cycle, so will be on the Claims Agenda, on the City Council Agenda during this cycle. So that would be both Claims and Community Development.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions? Not seeing any. So with that, I think we’ll turn to Mr. Dahl, and we will turn it over to Councilmember Andrew Johnson for the Information Technology Subcommittee.
Thank you, Council Vice President Clinton, and before us today, we have a presentation updating us on the outsourcing transition, which obviously is a very large project and undertaking, and it has been relatively quiet, probably, from a council member perspective on that, so we thought maybe it would be good to find out where things are at and how we’re doing. So that will turn over to Mr. Dahl.
Good morning, Chair Johnson, committee members. Otto Dahl, Chief Information Officer for the City of Minneapolis. I’d like to start by giving you just a general overview. As you know, we are transitioning between our outsourcing providers, we’re moving from Unisys to a new company, One Neck. We’re also insourcing two major functions back into the city. One is the desk side support team, those are the folks that come into your office space to work on your devices, and we are currently fully staffed in that area. And the second area is our service desk, and those are the, if you will, the help desk function that people call when they need services and/or need a problem resolved. We are currently eighty-five percent staffed there. We do have three offers out on the street, and if those are accepted, we will be at a hundred percent in that function as well. Also, and I’ll be talking a little bit more at length, there is going to be a new interface between IT and our clients, the city departments and their staffs. The software system that drives that interface is called Service Now, and you’re going to find that that is an experience much like you’re used to when you go out and get something on Amazon or other like services. And all of this is actually going to go live on November 30th of this year. There’s, was mention of our efforts in recruiting. We’ve had a total of, as I mentioned, thirty of the thirty-three people are on staff, and we’re looking for three others, that we have those offers out to, and we made use of the programmed IT ready under the Tech Hire Initiative, and actually hired five of our eight entry-level positions through that effort. And it has helped us in this year achieving fifteen percent increase in staffing of people with color, people of color, that has allowed us to get far more diversity on the IT staff. We now sit at twenty-seven percent of the staff is made up of people of color, twenty-nine percent are female. And so those efforts continue. And in particular, the move strategy that we use, and hopefully people have not experienced any challenges, because we surely haven’t heard about them, we have been moving over IT assets from the Unisys world to One Neck since early August, and what we basically do, we do this over a weekend, we actually physically make the cut on a Sunday, and then when people come to work on Monday, they’re actually working in new environments. We’ve been very successful, I believe, because we’ve had very few problems come up, and they’ve been very minor and handled immediately by staff. As I mentioned, we’ve been doing this since August, early August, and with the switch over of Public Works Construction Management System, that’s the Bentley software, this coming weekend, we will have approximately eighty percent of the IT assets shifted over to One Neck. And again, we’re scheduled to have everything over by the end of November. What we’d like is that December is what we call steady state, and just actually being in a situation of just running on One Neck with, if you will, sort of just Unisys in the background. Now, there really are a number of other changes that we’ve implemented relative to this switch in provider. As you may recognize, IT is being a reimbursable entity, we charge for our services. The primary way that we get money to operate is through an allocation model that’s based on a number of PCs, laptops, that people in the departments have, and that’s not changing, but what is happening is, is there are a number of fees that people have actually had problems with in the past that were going to be eliminated. We don’t need to charge for changes, specific changes, what we used to call IMAX, because we do that work with our own people now. We also are not charging for the, those one-off programs that people have on their PCs, what we call the tier-four support, because again, we’re supporting that internally, just like we now own the devices on the desktop, so there’s no lease charges or managed services charges as well. We’re also going to take a different approach with storage than we have in the past. Departments would often get notifications from us that you are in a position of running out of space, and to please clean up your activity. We are going to look at space or treat space as an enterprise asset, we will keep up with the growth that we’ve been able to see over the last several years, and we’ll track that to determine if we feel that it’s growing at an unacceptable rate, otherwise we are just going to keep going. And the reason we’re doing this is because we want to stop some behaviors that we’ve seen in staff, and that is, is they’ve been taking their data and throwing it off on media, on storage devices external that are not being backed up, et cetera, and so we really want people to keep their data on the systems that are set up by the IT department, because that data is being backed up and is survivable. We are also changing our orientation for the actual PCs, monitors, keyboards, and the light that you see in the office. We’re maintaining an inventory of that, but we’re, we’re going to treat all of those devices as, again, an enterprise asset, and so if a person leaves, we will reclaim that device and reissue either to a department where maybe they’re replacing that position, or the position is being moved around. Gives us an opportunity to clean up that device, set it for the new person, make sure that the technology that’s on it is appropriate for the work of that particular individual. And if someone has a new hire or whatever, we’ll be pulling that from a pool of devices that we will have. We do refreshes today at enterprise level, we understand what the refresh rates are, we also understand the increase in devices over the years based on observation, and so we have turned around and we are building this into our base allocation model, so departments won’t be charged for increasing, or for additional PCs for new staff, et cetera. And one of the focuses as well, that’s hardware, there’s also software, and a lot of times departments buy licenses for software that’s on their staff’s desktops, and if for some reason someone no longer needs that license or whatever, because they bought it, they would sort of put it in their drawer, and what we really want is those types of software products to be viewed from an enterprise standpoint, so that if a department no longer needs a license, then that license can be used by some other department user across the enterprise. Naturally, the department will have first dibs on, on that software that they originally had, but our intent is to ensure that we don’t have departments going out and needlessly buying extra licenses for a product, that someone else had a license, and because of a change in function, or, or change in staffing levels or whatever, are just sitting in someone in other departments’ desktop. Again, we want to be as cost-effective with these resources, because as one can quite imagine, some of these products, when you have multiple copies, multiple versions of the software out there, can add up in cost. So we’re taking that approach with software, much like what we’re doing with the PC hardware, et cetera, in our new way of trying to accomplish things. One of our rallying cries for this whole effort has been that we say internally, we’re IT, and the reason we say that is because we’re no longer tied to a business model that our outsourcer has when it comes to those touchpoints with our users, with the people in the departments and the departments overall. And so because of that, we can basically set the way we feel we need to relate and work with departments in meeting their technology needs. And there’s really two main initiatives that we’ve been working towards, one is what we call low effort, or what the industry calls low effort, and what I mean by that is, we want our clients, we want departments to have the least amount of effort to get the resources, the technology resources that they need. And so we drive certain capabilities that allow users to easily get either a problem fixed, or to get new technology, or to get a refresh of technology. We worked through surveys and customer journey mapping exercises with the departments to understand the pain points of our current processes, so that we could create new processes that were much more effective. For instance, one of the biggest headaches that departments have is when they get new employees, and sort of the onboarding activities associated with aligning technology for that new hire. And so we are completely reworking that with HR, to allow us to have a much smoother and a more effective process for onboarding of employees relative to the technology that they make use of. The other major initiative the staff has been sensitive to is we want to increase the productivity through the use of technology, not so much in bringing in new technology, even though that, that effort is always underway, but more importantly, in our view, is getting staff to understand the capabilities of the technologies that are currently available to them, and doing a much better job of ensuring that they can understand how technology may be able to help them in whatever their work is for the city. And so we are taking a much more proactive set of actions to allow folks to truly understand what true, what really turns out to be a lot of potential technologies in the city’s coffers today. And one of those things that people are going to see with this new service model is the fact that, yes, you’ve always been able to email or call us. In today’s world, a lot of people like to, you know, instant message chat, other sorts of ways of communicating, and we’re going to accept those. We’re also ensuring that people are going to be in a position of talking to someone that can relate to the technology, what I like to call ecosystems, that they are used to. It used to be that you came to work to get all the neat, cool technology, and these days, it seems, all the neat and cool technology is at home, what people are using in their personal lives, also potentially for new employees, what they might have been using at previous employers. And so we want to be taking our staff and ensuring that they are comfortable with the various ecosystems that have grown up in the IT industry, i.e. the Apple and the Android and the Windows worlds. Yes, we have people who are experts in those areas, for instance, in the Apple world, we actually hired a couple of folks who worked in Apple’s Genius Bar concept. So we can get into deep technical weeds if we need to with staff, but I want the people, particularly on the help desk, and the desk side support, and others within my organization, to really be able to relate and help people who might be coming from a different ecosystem deal with some of the systems and technologies that they have to when they’re employed with the city. We’re also, we have an extensive knowledge base that we’ve added to by buying some knowledge about IT, as well as adding our own experiences over the years, and we’re going to allow users to search that. A lot of people just like to look answers up themselves. You know, it is the age of Google, of asking Siri or someone for an answer, and those capabilities will be available for staff as well. Needless to say, they can always contact us directly in some fashion, and we’ll take care of them from there. What you’re going to also see in the service model is, as I mentioned, it’s more of an Amazon-like experience. We’re going to, at the point of you deciding, staff or department deciding on some technology, we’re going to tell you whether or not that technology is, if you will, let’s say it’s a software, is it in stock? When are we going to be able to deliver that service? What is it going to cost, if it does cost? All the sorts of things that you expect today, for instance, in your shopping, online shopping experience with companies around the world. Also, there will be shorter timeframes to achieve things. Probably one of the most dramatic changes is when a department needed an information system to be established, and they needed what we refer to as a server computer. system to be established, and they needed what we refer to as a server computer to run that application, our current world typically took six to eight weeks to acquire, configure, and bring up that server. That is now going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of two to three days. And so our ability to react to the needs of departments is going to be radically different than in the past, because again, we know that time is of importance at a lot of the time, and we're trying to shorten our ability to deliver services, even if they're new to the city or new to the department. There's going to be a lot of training that's going to go on in November. You'll notice from this training schedule, there's a lot of use of video. We're doing that for a couple of reasons. One is, we're finding that the younger generations like to, if they want to understand how to do some process or task, they like to look at a short, minute and a half, two and a half-minute type of video, where they can learn, see someone accomplish the activity. We also then can make use of these learning tools for new employees when they come onboard, and that's a very cost-effective way for us to develop those and then be able to reuse that. We will have some classroom sessions as necessary, but our focus is more on leveraging the use of video for the aforementioned reasons. And then finally, we are attempting to, you know, close everything out with Unisys, effectively running the show.